I'll do the hi sign. Are we recording?
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Great. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us for our January 6th formal board meeting. As you can see, we are personally spaced, socially distanced, including my two colleagues, Bill Gates, as well as Steve Chukri, who are joining us via the internet or the phone. So, welcome to you guys. This is going to be an awfully strange meeting to run because our entire clerk staff is doing this remotely. So, please let, please, everybody know, I expect mistakes today, but we'll just work through them, okay? Because this is going to be a first time for everybody. So, I appreciate everybody's hard work to be able to pull this off in such a rare time. So, I am going to gavel us in and would like to turn it over now to Supervisor Sellers to introduce Bishop David Bailey, who will be giving our invocation this morning, and also leading us immediately after the invocation into the Pledge of Allegiance. So, first of all, Supervisor, Vice Chair, Jack Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I am so honored to have my very close friend, Bishop David Bailey. He's an Episcopal Church bishop and sometime golfing buddy, although we haven't been able to do that as often as we'd like recently. But, and you know, every time I feel pressured by the challenges that we face here at the county, I reflect on what Dave is facing because his district in the church covers northeast Arizona and the Navajo Nation. So, he really is dealing with some challenges there. So, Bishop Bailey, if you would, please.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay. Bishop Bailey, hold on one second. I'm sorry for your comments, but so everybody knows, I'm going to go ahead and invite everybody to please, please stand. And you are ready to go. Thank you for being here.
You're most welcome. Let us pray. God of peace, we give thanks for the Board of Supervisors for Maricopa County and for those who have offered themselves to this service. We invite you to preside over this meeting. And even if we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining our ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote their own agendas. And may we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen. I now invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Bishop Bailey. And I'll keep the microphone to Vice Chair Sellers if I kind of stepped on in comments. But again, thank you, sir, for joining us. Jack?
Well, and just thank you again, David. I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of your support through everything that we're doing. Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for inviting me and wishing you a good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now move on to the roll call. So, Juanita, I can see you.
Yes.
Please call roll.
Supervisor Sellers?
Here.
Supervisor Chukri?
Here.
Supervisor Gates?
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo?
Yeah.
Chairman Hickman?
Here. Thank you. Steve, turn on your microphone. Sorry. Sorry, Juanita. I already had to castigate Supervisor Gallardo for not turning on his microphone.
Okay, thank you.
But don't worry. When you tell him to turn it on, then he never wants to turn it off. So, we're all good for the rest of the meeting. Okay, we are coming up to the agenda where it said that we would be sworn in by Juanita, and that's basically would be ceremonial because we are already, we've all been sworn in already. I'd like the public to know that. This pandemic has created some changes, especially this past week with the number of cases and even here at the county. So, it's affected us greatly, just like the citizens. So, I would like the public to know that we already have been sworn in. And before I turn it over to the next part, I want to just say, this is about the lowest attendance in person that I've ever seen in this auditorium. But I do want to point out, there's a fellow elected here joining us today. County Assessor Eddie Cook is joining us. So, thank you, Eddie, for being here. It's great to be a part of the team with you as we service the county citizens. And you're doing a fantastic job. And please, please keep that up. We've now come to the nomination and election of the new chairman of, for the Board of Supervisors for the 2021 calendar year. So, before I turn it over, it's, this has been a fantastic run, if you can call it that, a very different kind of chairmanship, as I've already said. And it's been a real pleasure to be the chairman during these odd times in the county. And I hope, I hope everybody understands just how important I felt this chairmanship was this year, but also how important it was that I could just be a colleague to all of you as we've made decisions on the fly, important decisions for the county, sometimes life and death decisions. And I just want to let you know, I've always appreciated all four of your support as I had this role. So...
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward, if I can have a point of personal privilege here before we make a motion, just want to thank you for your leadership. I know we thanked you many times during the year on many different projects, but this time I mean it. No, all seriously, I want to thank you for your leadership. This has been a historic year on all levels. Let it be, most importantly, the pandemic that's right in front of us, but to be able to pull off three very successful elections, and then all the other stuff that's added on top. I think, I think if you ask anyone even outside the county looking in as they see how this board operates, they would tell you that Maricopa County has operated and has always operated as Mr. Chukri always calls the best in class. And we are. We are. We always have been. But this year, we really shined. We've taken on so many different adversities. We've taken on so many different tasks and projects, stuff that we never anticipated. And I go back and I tell this to David and Chris all the time. I'm just amazed, the presidential preference election, for us to all kind of get together with our election staff and to be able to change direction at the 11th hour, you know, four days prior to the election. It's something that we have been planning and working on for many, for many months. But four days prior to the election, having to get together and really restructure how we were going to have a presidential preference election. And I'm just amazed. If you, if you asked me privately, say, oh, man, this is going to be just a disaster. I mean, because I know what it takes to put on an election. I think we all do. But it wasn't. It was a huge success. Right in the middle of pandemic, having to make these adjustments. So, not only are we able to ensure that our staff, our poll workers are safe, that the voters are safe, and the voters have an opportunity to exercise their right to vote. And it was a huge success. And I never, I never get over the fact that it's like, it's like having a kind of a huge event or a Super Bowl, and then having to change how they're going to do the game, you know, four days before. And we pulled it off. I think this whole county working together, putting, put aside any type of political gamesmanship and be able to look at how we can pull off this presidential preference election. And it was a huge success. And our primary and general was a success as well. Historic number of voters participating, just a great turnout. And then, you know, on top of even having to do this type of task of pulling off elections, we're dealing with this pandemic that has just, has just turned not only Maricopa County, the state in this country, this entire world upside down. People have passed away. People have got sick. People have lost their businesses. People are struggling right now just to make ends meet, pay their rent, their utilities. And it's just been just an unfortunate disaster. 2020 was just one of those years you want to kind of put in the history books and pretend it never happened. But we can look back at 2020 and really say, we did our jobs. We did what we were elected to do. We served the people of Maricopa County. And that comes from your leadership. That really does. I mean, you had, you kept us on track as we sometimes, at least for me, as I tend to drift, you pull me back in and making sure we stay focused. And then I do appreciate that. But this has been just a, just a historic year, 2020. Like I said, we want to, we kind of want to put it in the record books because of all the, all the bad and crazy stuff that has happened. But we can look back and say, Maricopa County performed. We did our jobs. We did what we needed to do to serve the people of Maricopa County. We didn't drop the ball. We didn't fight and throw mud at each other. I've seen so many other political subdivisions, but we didn't do that. We stayed the course. We worked together as a, as a family, not so much as a team, but as a family, to make sure that we were able to take on the tasks that were put in front of us. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I know that's a long thank you, but I do want to just say thank you for what you have done during the 2020 tenure. It seems like, you know, the way the rotation is, you're always going to have that, 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 that big election year. And you've had it again this time. But, but on top of even conducting three successful election, we have navigated through, through a pandemic. We're not done yet at all. We still have a lot of work in front of us. And, but 2020, you look back, and I told you this privately the other day, we did our job. We're going to, we need to continue to do our jobs, continue to do what we need to do to take on these tasks. And I have full faith that we will continue on that same path. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that very much. So, let's, let's go to that nomination for...
Mr. Chair.
Bill, Supervisor Gates.
My apologies, but if I might just make a couple of comments as well. Obviously, echo everything that Supervisor Gallardo said, but just a couple of things on a personal level. You know, I'm not sure everyone out in the community knows, but Clint, you since March have been on a call 8:30 in the morning every day with our top leadership directing, leading this team through the pandemic. And I can't thank you enough. And I will say it, you save lives. We'll never know how many, but you saved many, many lives because of your leadership. And I don't know what's more important than that. But not only did you save lives, but I think, and I'll say it, you helped save democracy in Maricopa County this year. You stood up as a man, as a leader, to defend the process, a process that is about to be challenged today in Washington, DC. But I have no doubts that we did the right thing. And that's because of your leadership. I couldn't be prouder of you. I will never forget what you did. There have been many great chairs over the years of this body, but no one's record can stand up to yours. And I thank you for that, Clint.
Well, let's just go ahead and stop the comments right there. So, thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. And I, you know, I've heard from all of you guys, and I really do appreciate it. And you guys have been like driving, you know, I've been the stagecoach leader, but I've had four tremendous horses pulling this wagon. And I can't look forward more to having somebody that is highly capable of doing the same, doing the same thing, become the next chairman. So, so I appreciate that. And I'm going to say that that should wrap it up, Bill, because I can't, I can't take it. So, the, let's get to the nomination and election of the new chairman. Do I have a nomination for the new chairman of the Board of Supervisors?
Mr. Chair, as good a job as you've done, I'm ready to make a motion appointing Jack Sellers as the new chair of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr., I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Gates. I appreciate it. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, as well as what Mr. Gates has stated, the great job you have done. I would be honored to second the nomination of Mr. Jack Sellers to be the chair of our 2021 Supervisor Session. So, second the motion.
Great. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We have a new chairman, Mr. Sellers. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Clint. I was going to give you one last chance to carry on your chairmanship for the next two or three months.
No, you heard me say aye in a very large way, Jack.
But I do want to tell you that when you began your chairmanship just one year ago, it was a completely different world. While you faced as chairman of something we never could have imagined, it was a true test of your leadership skills. I know I speak for my other colleagues when I say you better than us. But seriously, I can't thank you enough for the hours and hours and hours you put in during this year. The number of complicated issues that arose could never have been anticipated, but you rose to the challenge. I appreciate your willingness to keep us involved even when you had to move quickly. No chairman before, and I certainly hope no chairman in the future, will have to deal with that in a single year. I and your fellow, fellow board members, thank you for a job well done. And I'd now like to present you with a plaque from all of us.
Great. Thank you. I will be happy to hang, happy to hang this on my wall. Thank you, Jack.
Okay, I guess now is when I go down.
I'm getting out, I'm getting out of the frame.
Okay. Well, and, and, gosh, I'm overwhelmed. What a great, what a great group of people to work with. So, I want to thank my fellow board members for placing their trust in me to lead Maricopa County during a very difficult period. It really is an honor. A lot of the credit for where I am today goes to my wife, Marie, who passed away, who passed away eight years ago. In her final days, she made me promise that I would be okay and continue to serve our community. My children, Jack, Eric, and Shannon, and my son Eric is here with us today, have all encouraged me to step, every step of the way. They want me to be happy and continue to stay active in the things that I love. And I found that serving my community is the thing I love to do, and I want to help us prepare for an even stronger future. It's great to serve on a board with such outstanding colleagues, and all of us benefit from the immensely talented and dedicated staff at Maricopa County. Joy Rich has built a team of highly knowledgeable professionals who help this board succeed every single day. So, where do we go from here? Well, I have a few thoughts on that. Today, there's no greater threat to public health and safety than the COVID-19 pandemic. Over the last year, I've watched as our whole nation has been shaken to its core. Lives lost, businesses closed, and families unable to afford food, clothing, and shelter. And I believe it's incumbent upon all elected officials to use those tools available to us to help stop this suffering. That starts with tracking and slowing the spread of the disease itself. Under the leadership of Director Flanagan and Dr. Sunnenshine, Maricopa County has provided up-to-date guidance so individuals, families, businesses, schools, healthcare providers, and elected officials can make informed decisions to protect themselves and protect precious healthcare resources. And all of this occurred in alignment with CDC best practices and in partnership with the state. I believe science-backed mitigation efforts recommended by Public Health and supported by this board have in fact saved lives. Now, we're entering a new phase of the pandemic. Vaccinations have started, but it'll be months until there's enough vaccine for everyone. My office will look to expand our efforts to educate on facts, especially when it comes to the safety and efficacy of COVID-19 vaccines. The critics are loud. We will be louder. We will continue to lead based on science and common sense. The faster we as a county, a state, and a nation can beat this virus, the faster we can secure a brighter future for all Americans. This crisis is not just impacting people's health, it's putting a strain on families and businesses. This board took immediate and aggressive action to ease the pain of our citizens. I want to thank Assistant County Manager Leanne Bone and Human Services Director Bruce Liggett for taking the board's direction and implementing targeted, successful assistance programs. To date, we provided $5 million to nonprofit organizations and $70 million in small business assistance. It's important to keep business stores open so they can serve their customers and keep their employees on the payroll. A rental utility assistance program is helping to keep families in their homes. More than 6,000 households received assistance paying utility bills, and more than 7,200 households received help paying their rent. Protecting the most vulnerable and those most impacted is not just the right thing to do, it's our job. That's why we must also lead on the issue of homelessness. The 2020 point in count, point in time count showed more than 7,400 people in our county experiencing homelessness, with approximately half of those unsheltered. And that number will likely be larger in 2021. Because of the pandemic, some people are relying on the social safety net for the first time in their lives. Without our help, they too could become homeless. Maricopa County works continually to be part of that solution. And I'm especially grateful for the strong voice and leadership of Supervisor Gallardo. Steve, I look forward to working with you on this important countywide issue. This board dedicated $12 million of our CARES Act funds to move people off the streets, set up safer outdoor space, provide temporary overnight shelters, and assuring medical care for our most vulnerable. Further, this board has committed dollars to continue our support for those experiencing homelessness in 2021. I believe we need even more investment and focus on this issue. And I look forward to working with MAG, our cities and towns, the state, and nonprofit partners on more permanent solutions to homelessness. No single entity can solve this problem alone. We'll seek to find opportunities with our partners to expand services throughout the county. I believe this issue deserves our best efforts, and I know we have the talent to make progress. So, now, there will be a time, hopefully in the very near future, where this county will return to some sense of normalcy. This will be a time of opportunity, and we should be prepared. We know that as the economy recovers, we will be competing with other regions across the country for people, jobs, and opportunities. So, what does Maricopa County have that other regions don't? 70-degree winter days for one. But more importantly, we have leaders in this region who understand that we are stronger when we work together. It's one reason our job market is one of the best in the country right now. And it's why we've been the fastest-growing county for three years running. And if we can get government bodies on the same page, working in partnership with the country's most innovative school, ASU, and some of its most tech-savvy businesses, we can solve problems that once seemed insurmountable. That's the goal of the Smart Region Consortium that's championed by Supervisor Bill Gates. And it's a framework I hope to leverage during my chairmanship. Bill, I look forward to, I look to you for opportunities where the county may play a role and benefit from partnerships. Another issue that requires regional collaboration is transportation. That's something I know quite well after serving as chair on both the MAG Transportation Policy Committee and the State Transportation Board. The leaders who crafted Prop 400 in the early 2000s laid the groundwork for the growth we see today. Maricopa County is not only the fastest-growing county in population, but we also lead the nation in attractive businesses. That's something those leaders can be proud of today. But now, it's time for current leaders throughout Maricopa County to get serious about our infrastructure needs for the next 20 years. And this board has a significant role to play. I'll continue to be our representative on the MAG Transportation Policy Committee, and I plan to work closely with Supervisor Hickman, who I've asked to stay on as our representative on the MAG Regional Council. I'll continue to keep my friendship with current members of the State Transportation Board. I truly hope that we, along with our cities, towns, and MAG, can put in the work and make the tough decisions necessary to assure the next generation has the opportunity to enjoy the quality of life that's available to our citizens today. During my tenure on the Board of Supervisors, we will complete a regional transportation and infrastructure plan that will go to the voters. A plan sent to the voters needs to assure regional equity and flexibility. Crafting and getting voter approval for a new regional transportation plan is one of my highest priorities, not just for my chairmanship, but for as long as it takes to get it done right. In addition, I want to say a few words about another opportunity that may be available to us. The incoming presidential administration has hinted that they're willing to work with Congress on passing infrastructure investment legislation. I need Maricopa County to be ready to participate in any program that will benefit this region. So, I've asked MC DOT, our Flood Control District, to work closely with Government Relations Team on the, on the progress of such a program. We need to be ready to jump on this opportunity, and I know through the leadership of Jennifer Toth and Mike Fulton, we can be. So, please, let's do all we can to be prepared. Okay, now let's address the biggest elephant in the room, election integrity. First and most importantly, this Board of Supervisors welcomes good faith efforts to make our elections the best they can be. That's why my colleagues and I have supported a full forensic audit of our election tabulation equipment. All once, the litigation related to 2020 general elections is over. And as Supervisor Chukri has said, we're totally committed to be best-in-class in elections and relentless improvement in all areas of our organization. We'll work with the new recorder, the legislature, and election experts, regardless of political party, to make sure people can vote when and how they want. They need to trust that their ballot was counted as it was cast. Some might say this is redundant or unnecessary, but I believe another audit is worth it, even if we can give one additional person a renewed faith in our democracy. To be clear, audits and hand counts to date have shown ballots cast in 2020 were tabulated accurately, starting with the presidential preference election in March, continuing into the August primary, and concluding with the November general. Many experts believe these were some of the finest and most secure elections we've ever had. Now, I've spent a lot of time looking into the allegations that have been thrown Now, I've spent a lot of time looking into the allegations that have been thrown around since November 3rd. We all have. The stakes are too high not to take this very seriously, and I went in with an open mind, but today, there's no "there, there." I'm discouraged to hear people in the public square, on social media, and to my face insist otherwise, and I'm afraid it's easier than ever for misinformation to spread. In many ways, I believe this is the greatest challenge we face as a country: the ability to work from a shared set of facts, and the facts are: 10 different times complaints about election fraud, manipulation, or tampering in Maricopa County's elections have been brought against this board. Each case has been dismissed by the courts or withdrawn by the plaintiffs. I've asked enough questions and seen enough of our operation to feel comfortable looking anyone in the eye and giving them my word. Our elections were run with integrity, and the results canvassed by this board were accurate. And I understand, nothing I say from this podium is likely to convince those who flood our phone lines and inboxes, but I'm committed to keep trying. In 2021, we'll go above and beyond with our education efforts and communications to assure people of the integrity of our elections' operations. Maricopa County has a fantastic staff, great leadership, and a desire to serve. They're the best of us, and theirs is a story I'm happy to tell to anyone willing to listen. Transparency, not just in elections, will be one of the cornerstones of my chairmanship. We will share information with the public, we'll be open to feedback, and we will be inclusive to all who want to participate. I expect our staff to be open to new ideas and perspectives and welcoming a public inquiry so long as that inquiry is in good faith. I know there are many tough decisions ahead. We're still in a public emergency. The need in our community is great, but the money is not unlimited. We benefited in the last year from federal CARES Act funds, but this year holds no such promise of that federal support. So under my leadership, request will need to be justified as necessary. I know my colleagues have a long history of being fiscally prudent, and we will work together on a fiscal-year 2022 budget that works for all of our residents. I can't think of another time in my life where tomorrow holds so much uncertainty. In my two years on the board, we've been presented with so many unusual challenges that nothing seems shocking anymore, but what gives me great hope is what I've seen from this dais, in meetings with my colleagues, and in the daily work of our county workforce. Whatever the challenge, whatever the crisis, Maricopa County does not flail wildly from place to place. We don't overreact, and we don't underreact. We deal with issues professionally and logically, we do it with respect, and we do it based on facts. I believe that approach will continue to serve us well in 2021. So thank you again for allowing me to serve as your chairman. I look forward to a much brighter new year. Thank you again.[832.41][832.41](APPLAUSE).
(LAUGHING) Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just want to real quickly just say thank you for stepping up and leading us in 2021. I appreciate your comments and your speech, and I look forward to working with you throughout the year. So thank you so much, and congratulations. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Gates.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to echo Supervisor Gallardo's comments. That was a fantastic speech, and I think you did an incredible job of articulating what the county's been doing in the last year in setting out the vision for your chairmanship. So thank you so much for sharing those words with us.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Gates. Okay. Yes, Supervisor Chukri.
Forgive the voice, but I enjoyed what you had to say. Jack, you and I have known each other a long, long time, probably, I think, longer than the rest of our colleagues. We go back to the early 2000s, and I will tell you, you've always been a pragmatist, and I think in this speech, it's a smart, pragmatic approach. And as a county, I think we've always looked at that to make sure that we're not only always going in the right direction, but we're doing so with the future and what we don't see coming around the corner, but preparing for it. And that's, I think, encapsulated in your comments today, and I look forward to serving with you. I think you're going to do a fantastic job, and thank you for letting me be a part of today. And Mr. Hickman, I didn't get a chance to say anything because I know you didn't want to hear more, but at the same time, your ability to navigate what you had to navigate without repeating what Mr. Gates and Mr. Gallardo said earlier, our new chairman, it was not easy, and it certainly isn't for the faint of heart, but you rose to the occasion each and every day, quite frankly, at 8:30 for those calls and making sure that we were leaving no stone unturned. And I can go on and on. I think you've heard my comments in the past, but I also want to make sure to convey my gratitude and appreciation for your hard work as well. So thank you, Mr. Hickman. Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working with you, and congratulations on setting a wonderful path for 2021 for Maricopa County.
Thank you, Steve. I very much appreciate it, and you're right, I couldn't take any more comments at that point in my life (LAUGHING) just 10 minutes ago, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And thank you so much, Supervisor Chukri. We hope you're getting better every day, and we really look forward to having you back. We really appreciate your leadership on this board, so hurry back. Okay, moving to the agenda, item number five: Justice of the Peace Appointment for White Tank Justice Court.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Supervisor Hickman.
Yeah, I would like to just have a couple of comments before you look for a motion because I'm going to be very happy to give the original motion. As you guys know, appointments are a big part of our jobs here, and especially when it happens to be in a district or a region that we represent as well. I just wanted to let my colleagues know, this appointment is mostly in my region or my district, but it also has some of Steve Chukri's district... I'm sorry, Steve Gallardo's. I always get... You guys are always the same to me, Steve Chukri, Steve Gallardo. Supervisor Gallardo also shares part of the White Tanks Justice Court region as well, and we talked a little bit yesterday, but the people have submitted their names for this court months and months ago, and I have done my best to vet them in that timeframe, and I also felt it was very important that we wait. The court system is changing. There are pro temps filling in for this job that are doing extremely well out there, but there is a new class of Justice of the Peace, and I thought maybe this could, by delaying this pick, it could give that person the chance to really get trained for the job. At the same time, other new Justice of the Peace candidates and winners are starting to train, and that is starting today. So I want to let you know that there was many people in my community that would have been great selections, and I took all of their applications to heart, interviewed quite a few of them. Some of them got double interviews. This is how justice is represented to our community at the most local level, and I thought that that's important to all of us. So I want to thank everybody who put in for the appointment. It was a tough decision, but I alighted on one person. She is a new mother again. I have known her for many years. I have known her family. She has a law degree. She currently works for the Attorney General's Office and is a section manager, so she knows how to manage people. She comes highly recommended by not just her bosses, but also people that have worked with her. And like I said, I've gotten to know her and her family on a personal level for the entire eight years that I've been a supervisor, and a little bit before that, too, on the baseball fields. So I could not be happier than recommending to this board to make a motion for Ms. Heidi Owens to become the White Tank Justice of the Court Justice.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second the nomination, and just a real quick comment. District 5 has a small portion of the Justice Court, so we kind of followed the lead of our Supervisor Hickman, who has the larger portion of the court, but it is a very important position to fill, and I thank him once again for taking his time and doing his due diligence. These courts are so important, and it's so critical to make sure that we have folks that are going to be appointed, that are going to serve the community and have a strong understanding of the purpose of the Justice Courts. These Justice Courts are available for the community, those members that have maybe very little access to legal help or very little pocket money can go to and seek justice, and that's what these courts represent. So I did review the resumes and definitely concur with Supervisor Hickman's selection, and I'd be honored to second the nomination.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, item number six: Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life Proclamation. We'll call on Juanita Garza with the Clerk's Office to read the proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Whereas the Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between young people, local communities, government entities, and law enforcement in a positive way, and whereas our local schools are facing preventable suicides and tragedies that may include warning signs in person or online, but bystanders and friends remain silent among threats or cries for help, and whereas our young people can empower to report concerning posts or comments to school representatives or law enforcement, and adults can receive training to help spread the message, it is okay to care enough to speak up, stand up, and save a life. And whereas more than 4,500 Arizona students from 157 public charter, private, and tribal schools have learned the message and created student-led impact projects in their schools and communities that have impacted over 400,000 youth in the state of Arizona. Now therefore be it resolved that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of January 2021 as Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life Month, and be it further resolved that Arizona schools, students, parents, educators, police departments, and community organizations are encouraged to coordinate a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer and promote a healthy environment for all children and adolescents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Juanita Garza. I have a note here that says to call on Gina Godby-Hare and Jeff Kertschler from Maricopa County Office of the Public Defender. Are they on the line?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Chairman Sellers and members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Kertschler, and I am an employee of Maricopa County. I'm with the Public Defender's Office, but I stand here before you today on behalf of Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life. I'm honored to accept this proclamation. Gina Godby-Hare couldn't be here this morning, but she and I thank you for the support. I want to say a few words about Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life, and I think everyone knows that the Board of Supervisors in Maricopa County have supported the organization from day one, and through the partnerships in Maricopa County and within the county itself, this movement and organization has grown each and every year. We are now in our fifth year. Last year, with the support of this board, Maricopa County Attorney's Office, the indigent defense offices, and many organizations and agencies within the county, we had a 13K event. We had over 100 volunteers from within the county at our conference last year. This year, we are moving to a virtual platform in light of the pandemic and what's currently going on in the world, and while that is not the ideal situation, it allows us to reach more than 10,000 students and families and other members of the community. We would like to take this opportunity to invite each of you to attend that conference virtually on January 19th. You can register at speakstansave.com and click on the government person is how you would register, and we'd like to see you there. This year's conference, the theme is resilience. Our young community always faces challenges, and no one's immune, and this year, especially with the pandemic, virtual learning, the lack of contact with the peers, their peers, students are really in a bind. And to echo Chairman Sellers, quote, "This nation has been shaken to its core this year." And what our community needs is to overcome those challenges and adversities in our community, and to do that, we need to build resilience, and the relationships and supports are key in doing that. On the individual level, relationships of trust are integral, but on a more broad level, we look to our leaders for stability and knowledge that there is a tomorrow. The resources that the county provides and the support in the community are so important, and Chairman, again, you described those very, very well in your speech, and I don't want to spend too much time on that because you did that so well, but they are what this community needs, and people need to know that those resources and the things that our leadership is doing to support the community in this extraordinary time. So through Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life, our mission this year is to help our community build resiliency, alert them to those resources, and let them know that we stand together and say that you are not alone. Each year, this board has supported Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life, and this proclamation will be on our website showing your pledge of support not only to the organization, but to the students, the families, and the community at large. So again, on behalf of Gina Godby-Hare, the Speak Up Stand Up Save a Life organization, and myself, we appreciate the county's investments and support. I thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and I'll speak for all the board in saying we really appreciate what you're doing and your dedication to what you're doing for the county and for our community in general, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Items 7 through 11.
I don't think we... Mr. Chairman, real quickly before we take our vote, I do want to, again, thank the public, as you just said, thank the Public Defender's Office, County Attorney's Office, and many of the school districts that have participated. As our gentleman speaker just stated, I remember when this was kicked off, I think it was a handful of school districts from the West Valley that kind of came together with the County Attorney's Office and Public Defenders and other partners, and they rolled this out, and to see this grow over the years and see more school districts engaged, and I was not even aware that they had this conference, which is excellent. I think it's a good time for students to be able to continue to engage and talk and support each other. This is about sending a message as... This is about sending a message, as stated, that everything will be okay, they're not alone, that there are folks that are here to help and support, and we're providing that platform. And that's what this is all about. So I do want to thank, once again, the County Attorney's Office for taking the lead, the Public Defender's Office for being part of it, and all our school districts throughout the valley. Like I said, it started off as a small one, but this thing has grown, which is so good to see. And so all the great work they're doing to continue to engage our young people. And as stated, this is more time than ever. Our young people need some support and some guidance, and many of them kind of feel trapped. I have family members, young ones, that feel trapped in a room, you know, they're learning virtual right now, and they just need some extra support and guidance. And when they can get it from their own peers, I think it just goes that much further. So always happy to see this resolution come before us. So thank you once again to all our school districts and all our partners to make this possible.
Are you going to give a motion?
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we already made the motion. I was just rambling on.
Well, yeah.
You expect this, Mr. Chairman, from over here from District Five, okay? I got a lot to say.
But, you know, I will take the blame for that, because I was already...
No, that's okay. Mr. Chairman, I would be...
Never admit your mistakes as a chairman.
Yeah, always point the finger. Point to your predecessor. No, Mr. Chairman, all serious, I'd be honored to, once again, make the motion to approve the proclamation in front of us.
Thank you Supervisor. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick thing, and I'd love to make the second on this. This program started because of an incident, a tragic incident about a suicide at the Independence High School campus. And I know that Gina Godby-Hare, working with valley leadership, so Jeff, please give Gina my regards. I know how instrumental she was. This is such an important time to have this program really grow out of its infancy and become very engaging. And it's super important right now to the high schoolers, not just the grade schoolers, but the high schoolers. There are so many high schoolers that mask their emotions and their feelings away from their parents, but this gives the ability for their classmates to hear this and make sure that their classmates seek help or get help before they take an incredibly, quite possibly fatal decision about their life. And that's unfortunately some of the side effects of this pandemic and what it's doing to some of our people. I truly worry about not just the grade schoolers, but the high schoolers, too. Their world has been set upside down. The cancellation of school sports, school activities, school clubs where they can't get together is frightening as a parent. So I am more than happy to make a second to the motion to accept the proclamation.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. Thank you all again.
Very good.
Okay, now moving on to Items seven through 11. County officers, reappointments, resignation, and appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Travel Reduction Program, Regional Task Force, Air Pollution Hearing Board, and the Sheriff's Office Agreement with Banner Health. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion for approval, Items seven through 11, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Items 12 and 13, County Management Assistant County Manager Leigh Anne Bone, Recertification of Maricopa County Workforce Development Board, and Resignation of Maricopa County Workforce Development Board Member. The board will now consider Items 12 and 13.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve Items 12 and 13, and if I might make a brief comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Go ahead Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a second to thank Leigh Anne and her team for the great work. This has been a significant effort to move this forward towards recertification of the Maricopa County Workforce Development Board. And I also want to recognize our past chairman, immediate past chairman, Clint Hickman, for his leadership on this as well.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That motion passes. Moving on to Items 14, 15, and 16. Animal Care and Control, amend COVID grant and budget adjustment. Number 15, medical examiner, amend Conrad agreement. And Item 16, procurement services, security, building, parking garage. The board will now consider Items 14 through 16.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Items 14, 15, and 16.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Setting of hearings, Item Number 17, Clerk of the Board, Rancho Ventura, Number 12, Irrigation Water Delivery District. The board will now consider Item Number 17.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion. Give it to Mr. Gates. It's his district.
Thank you Supervisor Gates. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes unanimously. Okay, consent agenda, Items 18 through 22. The board will now consider Items 18 through 22.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Items 18 to 22.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We will now recess. As the Board of Supervisors and convene as a Flood Control District Board of Directors. The board will now consider Item Number 23, Resignation from Flood Control Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this item and also thank Mr. Monger for his service on the Flood Control Advisory Board.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Now we will adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and convene as the Stadium District Board of Directors. I will entertain a motion on designation of officers for the Stadium District.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that the Stadium District appoint Jack Sellers as the chairman of the Stadium District.
Thank you Supervisor Gates.
Happy to second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Hickman. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Gates.
Yes, I would also make a motion that we appoint Mr. Steve Gallardo as the Secretary of the Stadium District.
Thank you Supervisor Gates. Do we have a second?
I will second the motion as well.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. So we will now adjourn as the Stadium Board of Directors and reconvene as a Board of Supervisors. Item Number 25, Public Comment. Clerk, do you have anything to report regarding public comment email responses?
Chairman, I do. We have 10 miscellaneous comments. We have received 10 COVID-related comments, 838 regarding elections. We have two homelessness comments and five comments regarding mask mandates, and all of these comments have been shared with all the board offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Item Number 26, Supervisor's Summary of Current Events. County Manager Rich, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, I just didn't get a chance to acknowledge your chairmanship for the year, and since I only have this very small Kleenex, I will try to make it brief. But Supervisor Gates mentioned the 8:30 phone calls, but what folks don't know is what happens after those 8:30 phone calls every day, that you were constantly available to us seven days a week, and not leading from an ivory tower, but here shoulder to shoulder with your staff, willing to participate, give us of your time. And same for your chief of staff, Scott Eishem. I think folks don't realize that no other chairman had ever been asked to do what you've been asked to do this year, and it was not just, you know, every morning, it was every night, early mornings, late nights, holidays. You were always there, not only to lead us, but to work with us, and I think that's the greatest thing that you showed us this year as a chairman, that both you and Scott were always available and not from up on a pillar. You were right there with us every step of the way. So thank you so much for everything you did. It was a long winding road this year, but there's no one else that I would personally rather have traveled it with than you. I consider you a friend, and I very highly regard everything that you did for us this year. Thank you. Thank you, Joy.
Thank you. I will now go to the people that are attending virtually. Supervisor Chukri.
No comments, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations again on your chairmanship.
Thank you, Steve. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And this actually goes in line with your remarks during the chairman's speech. Last night, I had the opportunity to participate in a panel in connection with the Smart Region events that are going on right now, sponsored by ASU. And thank you, Jack, for being a part of that. It was a great opportunity to speak with other leaders on the developments in the Smart Region effort, including Representative Weniger, who talked about all he's been doing out in the legislature. And then we also had Sandra Watson from the ACA talking about these efforts. So I know these are difficult times right now. I know people are hurting out there, but at the same time, I think there is great promise with the Smart Region developments, and I really appreciate your support of them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Moving to Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and once again, congratulations on your chairmanship. Look forward to working with you as we start this 2021 year. A couple of things on... What's today? Monday? Monday. Had the opportunity to take a quick tour of our COVID vaccination pod over here at the Veterans Memorial Coliseum with Dr. Sun and Shine, and I was really impressed. I really didn't know what to expect. I went down there and got a look on the process that they have laid out there. They have it down as a science. I mean, they really do have a process that is working. I saw a number of vehicles that were coming in and getting through relatively as fast as possible, but it was very impressive. And I just want to let county health, I know Banner Health professionals have been out there, really working hard on making sure they're getting folks vaccinated and making sure that they're okay as they leave and so on. So it was really impressive to see that operation. I haven't had an opportunity to go to the others, but this particular one at the Coliseum was very impressive. So thank you to our county health professionals, as well as Banner Health for the work they do out there, and all the other entities that are involved. They saw the Sheriff's Office out there helping in terms of traffic. They have some other private entities that are out there helping. I think American Valet is that they're helping in terms of directing traffic as well. So they have a lot of partners there. So great job that I saw out there at the Coliseum. Later on today, as we gear up for the 2021 legislative session, as a member of the County Supervisor Association, we have our legislative orientations. It's going to be virtual this time, but we have many of the newly elected supervisors from various counties that are going to participate and learn the legislative process. This is going to be an interesting legislative year, no doubt. A lot of key issues on the plate, and it's important for everyone to kind of be working together and understanding the process. Anytime you have 15 counties come together, it delivers a loud message. And I know just firsthand experience of being down there at the Capitol, you know, you look to organizations, let it be ACO, or let it be the county supervisors, or leagues and cities and towns, many of these organizations to kind of guide us through the legislative process as legislators when I was there. So I'm looking forward to being part of that virtual discussion later on. Legislative session right around the corner, a lot on the plate, and I know our legislative team is gearing up to do their job down there at the Capitol as well, representing the people of Maricopa County. And then last but not least, once again, thank you, Clint, for your service. But I think Joy pointed it out, but Scott, Scott's sitting there all quietly and trying to pretend that he had no role in the success of 2020 in terms of our dealings, but Scott has been just a great person to work with as well. I know Chris relies on Scott for, you know, support and guidance and all that stuff. So thank you, Scott, for your work as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Steve. Supervisor Hickman.
Well, former vice chair and now Chairman Sellers, thank you for the ability. I don't want to rehash this whole year, but a couple people, thank you for mentioning. I was going to mention it also, about just how hard my staff, Michelle and Scott, worked this year. And, you know, they have always been available to the other district offices, and I've always hoped that we would follow in past roles of staff to the chairman, that our door was always open, and any way we could help bring items to this board for consideration, we are going to always keep our ears open, and that means that you have to be available to that. And so Scott, Michelle, fantastic job. We had to work through some key retirements, Fran McCarrill leaving us. So welcome, Juanita. But also, our CFO retired, and that's just a testament also to Joy and her group. The very first time I was chairman, four years ago, I made it a point to say, I'm going to try to get to know people at the county. And this year, that was foisted upon me at 8:30 in the morning. If I didn't want to meet people, I was going to meet them because there were issues and problems, and Joy needed the help, but really no direction. You've put such a fantastic team together. It's apparent, we've run one of the largest counties in the United States and have done it well during a pandemic, and that speaks to the people that are doing the actual work. It's great to watch that, and take some kudos at times, but you guys and your staff is the one that does the work day in and day out through a pandemic, coming to jobs, putting themselves in tough situations, but being here. So I want to thank you for that. Welcome to the new electeds. Eddie, fantastic job as you do your appointment. You won the election outright, and it's because the voter feels confident that you were doing a good job already. Welcome Stephen Richard. Welcome Mr. Allen, both of them, and their new staffs are being very receptive to learning about the county and hopefully making great decisions in those areas as constitutional elected officers. So I can't, you know, as a lowly supervisor, I cannot wait to work for them. My board members and their staff, you guys have done an incredible job, too. The public doesn't see it, but just how engaged you are on issues, not only in your respective districts, but also as the county as a whole, is very appreciative. I think that makes us a better county. So thank you guys for that. And the last, what we are going to see is a great worker in action. You've got a great staff, Jack, with Bridget and Rick, that are very knowledgeable... that are very knowledgeable about the county. But it was an easy decision a year ago when I picked you as my vice chair. I felt the need to make sure, you know, you were relatively new as well in this role. You came from city government, but you got a chance for a couple of years now to look and see. The voter also responded and said you were doing a great job and elected you to your position outright. And I want to thank you for, actually, all of you guys for emerging out of the safety of just working in the private sector, doing things, but hating the call and performing this job, truly what it is, a public service. Not political service, but public service to one of the largest counties in the United States. So we all view it as such. It is easy for me to participate in an election and win because it is a board that I want to serve on and people I want to serve with. So I've appreciated that specifically about this year, but all the years I've been here. I've had the ability and the blessings to work with great people. So Jack, congratulations. I know you're going to be great at this, whatever I can do to help you. But I look to your leadership. Plug me in where you want, or let me take some time off. It's up to you. So, thank you.
Well, good luck with the time off. And I just want to, well, first of all, I want to acknowledge my staff because I am so fortunate to have Rick and Bridget. And they're both so frustrated they can't be here today because of possible exposure and quarantine on this pandemic. But I'm really very fortunate to have such a dedicated, solid staff supporting me in every way. I guess the thing I want to end with is, you know, everywhere I've gone over the last year or more, I keep telling people that we are facing some challenges like none we've ever faced before. And we all recognize that we have to deal with those and do what's right with those. But we're the fastest growing county in the United States. Through all of that, we can't lose the focus on providing what we need to do to sustain the quality of life that has made us so attractive, to cause us to be the fastest growing county. So that's certainly my goal is I want to do everything that we need to do to address the problems and the issues that we have on a continuing basis. But I want to keep us focused on what we need to be doing for a brighter future. And that's really what the message that I want to give out. And, you know, I did attend the Smart Region Summit digitally last night. And I'm so pleased that Supervisor Gates is representing us with that group and on that panel last night. But I was so encouraged by that because this is a group of very smart, very involved, very dedicated people who really have the vision that I have for what does it take to keep us moving forward? And so thank you, Bill, for being involved with that and all you're doing. And with that, again, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you putting your confidence in me. And I hope I can live up to it. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.